Okay folks, it's four o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I would just like to remind you as part of the Zoom in before you speak, if you could state your name, please, just so that we all know. Let's see, the agenda was posted, so I would... Greg and Chan, nice to see you. Gentlemen, I would ask Greg and Chan, I'm looking for approval of the minutes of July 2nd, regular Board of Selectmen's meeting, please.
This is Chandler. I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the July 2nd Selectmen's meeting. And I would like to make one modification. Item number three.
Chan, I'm sorry, you have a modification? Or you vote to approve with the modification?
I'm making the motion just to start discussion. And I would like to make the motion to include the amendment that I'm about to read.
Chandler, can you speak up, please?
Sure, to be yelling, that's about as much as I've got.
Chan, I think you're speaking at a normal volume, but I really can't hear you. Is Heather there?
Can you tell me how to adjust the volume of my microphone?
There should be, there may be a volume key on the top row of buttons on your keyboard, like a speaker key?
That's at full.
You're at full? I guess other than that, just speak, listen to your microphone and louder?
There's nothing on this screen. That's just who's talking. It worked fine before, right?
Yeah, it worked fine before. I could hear him at the last meeting.
We can hear him well. We can hear you, Heather, as well.
Okay. Who can't hear?
I can hear him just fine.
Yeah, I don't know why we're not hearing him well. Because I've got my volume railed.
Somebody has a chicken. I don't see any other way to turn this up at all. Wait a second, speaker mode. By definition...
It's something in the town hall. We're hearing you fine.
Microphone. Shut off automatic.
Automatically adjusts the volume. No, maybe we don't want that.
Is that any better?
Can you hear that?
No.
Great.
If I can ask, it appears that you all, five or six of you, can hear each other. Maybe you can hear us, but we cannot hear any of you.
We can hear you, but the volume is very low.
Sounds like a town hall issue.
Yeah, it appears that you can hear each other, but we can't hear you. I mean, the people here in the basement of the town hall.
Chandler, can you speak again?
Sure. My computer volume is as high as it goes. It's at 100%.
I just changed to the webcam microphone and it's still not.
Can that computer be hooked up to that system?
I can try that. Or Jay, do you want, if you sit closer, can you hear?
You can try to push up.
I'm just gonna have, I'm just afraid I'm gonna miss something. You want to just go ahead?
Chan?
Yeah?
Do you want to, again, you had mentioned approving the minutes, I believe, with modification, is that correct?
You choked out in the middle of that. I lost your voice for a while.
He said he wanted to approve it with amendments.
If you're talking about the amendment that I'd like to make to the minutes that we're going to approve?
You want to amend the minutes. Okay.
Okay, now it'd be item number three?
Item number three.
It says that the, hopefully the work upstairs would be completed by June 6th. I'm guessing that's a typo?
Yes. Actually, it was supposed to be July 6th and we're still putting finishing touches on it. So would you like to change that to July 6th?
Sure, that's all I had.
All right. Anything else?
Greg is here. But he has his camera turned off.
How about volume?
I'm unmuting him. I'm asking him to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. Again, your volume is very, we see you now. Your volume is very low. Did you hear what Chandler said about the minutes?
Yes, I had the same comment, basically.
Okay.
Same question, yeah. All right, I have...
July 6th, and as I said, there's still some minor stuff that we're working on out there. Do you, are you both in agreement to accept the minutes?
I have a question on a different matter.
Go ahead.
All right. On page two?
Number two?
Page two, number...
Oh, page two, I'm sorry.
Page two, number eight.
Number eight.
Other from the committee where it talks about that I offered a draft statement and discussed it with you guys. And I read the statement into the minutes and at the meeting, and it was, and to be voted on, and it was voted on. And therefore, that statement that I read should be put into the minutes, and it's not in there.
Okay.
Even though it was defeated, it was a motion...
You could email that. You know what, Greg? I think I still have an email. But I will get it to Christine to amend these minutes, okay? To put your statement as part of the minutes?
Yes, thank you. Christine in the town hall?
Yeah, but I've still got it. I'll send it over to her.
Cindy Brown did these minutes.
Cindy Brown did these minutes.
Right.
But I think that, do you want to send it to you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll send it to Christine, and she can amend these minutes. Okay?
That's fine. You know, the statement, the statement as I read it, that should be in there.
Greg's muted.
I don't know why.
Greg, you're muted again. I see your lips moving.
I'm right here. I didn't touch anything.
I show him it's unmuted.
And there's nothing on here that tells me to do anything.
Greg, I'm sorry. I can't hear you.
There must be a real problem there at the town hall, because we can all hear...
Charlene, I can't hear you now.
Yeah, I can hear everybody. I got Charlene, I got Lee, I got, I could hear Chandler before, and I can hear Diane.
Okay, now, we can hear you just barely. Greg, when I, I saw your lips moving, but I couldn't hear you. I'm gonna send your statement to Christine to amend these minutes from July 2nd, okay? I got, I see the thumbs up, okay. All right, thank you. Next item.
We need to vote as approved. Vote as approved.
I'm sorry?
Vote on the minutes as amended.
Okay, so you're making the motion?
No, Chandler did.
My motion is to accept the minutes with the two amendments as discussed.
Okay, thank you. So it will be amended to include the statement from Greg.
Correct.
You move to accept the minutes with the...
As amended.
As amended.
Right, okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a request. Lee Westler is joining us this afternoon, and he wants us to consider a request from the Conservation Commission to have a Facebook page. So, Lee, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, we just, we asked that we can have our own unique Facebook page, because going through the town's Facebook page, it's just too tedious for us, and we can't get all the information promptly that we like to do. And I promise you, our own Facebook page, there'll be nothing political about it. It's all information about workshops and conservation issues. But it just, it'll be a lot easier for us if we could have our own dedicated web page, or Facebook page.
Okay. Is it going to be interactively?
Is it gonna be interact, yeah.
As in, people can leave comments and... Okay, now, who has the ability to take, would you have the ability to take down a comment if it was inappropriate?
It would be, I mean, I don't go on Facebook, so you're asking somebody who has no clue about Facebook, but the powers that be that understand Facebook, yeah, they would be able to do that.
That would be my only hesitation is, you know, somebody, it seems like no matter what you do these days, there's somebody who's got something awful to say about it. So I'm in favor of your Facebook page, but just as long as you've got the ability to get rid of statements that are inappropriate if that happened.
Sure, yeah. I mean, there's really no, there's nothing opinion-wise about it. It's all gonna be just information.
Okay.
Well, Lee, I understand that, but I think what Chandler's saying is, we've seen this with other social media, that his concern is, is that your intention is one thing, but you may have people making inappropriate comments on your Facebook page. And I think Chandler's only concern is, if you would have the ability to edit those or to block certain people or to delete certain comments, my understanding is that you do if it's your Facebook page.
Right. My understanding, again, I'm not on Facebook, so I am naive about it. But my understanding is, yes, to all your questions. But we'd be able to delete and take down inappropriate comments. And if that, I mean, if it's something that's happening, then we'll have to revisit the question. But it's not something I anticipated.
Okay, Greg?
Do we have any kind of a policy that sort of governs the, how town Facebook page and how town website is done, and what's appropriate, what's not? So this one would follow those guidelines in all likelihood?
Greg, believe it or not, it's being worked on, not as we speak, but it is being worked on. And the reason is, we've already had some issues, not related to the town, but we've had relation, issues in town related to organizations and posting on websites. We had the town attorney come in and give a presentation to a group about the issue between, you know, freedom of speech and FLOI, and what you can or cannot post. So yes, we're working on a policy for the town because of the various websites, et cetera, et cetera, what you can post, what you can't post, that sort of thing. So in answer to your question, Greg, yes.
That's terrific, and then, and thank you for reminding me of that. And then also, is it, sure, it's possible, Lee, that the link to your Facebook page could be posted on the town's website under Conservation Commission?
Yeah.
Just to make sure that happens, and there's no, you know, then you're in business, right?
Okay. But I would ask, Crystal, is that doable?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, thanks.
Given that Lee doesn't have a Facebook page now, but he wants to have one, I think he'd be working with some of our tech coordinators out of the town hall and designing this. I don't want to mention names, because she's here and it hasn't been mentioned to her previously.
All right.
Okay. So Chan and Greg, are you both in agreement that, you know, the Conservation Commission could have a Facebook page?
Yes.
Yes.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, but wait, I, well, yeah. Can other organizations come before the board and ask for a similar thing, if they wish?
I would think yes, but they'd have to come before and ask. I don't want to have 18 different Facebook pages floating out in the, you know, atmosphere. I think Lee, you know, by approaching us, I think that's fine. I think, again, there has to be a certain amount of, I don't want to say the word "control", but I think there has to be, much of the social media, as you all know, has created many, many problems. And I think Lee's trying to get information out to the public and be an area where folks can have input back to the Conservation Committee, which I think is great. But I think we have to be cautious that, you know, we do it the right way, if you will, thoughtfully for the future.
All right. So, then, did you make the motion, Chan?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we allow the Woodstock Conservation Commission to start a Facebook page of their own.
Okay. All three are in favor? Yes. Okay, good. Thanks, Lee.
Thank you.
Appreciate the effort.
Thank you, Lee.
Welcome.
This is great. Lee gets what he wants, and then he tunes out.
He didn't even bring us any ice cream.
Okay, next on the agenda, we consider the appointment of Jessica White as a full-time member of the Arbor Edom Committee for the term July 16th through November 16th, 2021. And gentlemen, I believe that was in your packet. And Jessica is joining us. Look at this.
Hello. Nice to see you all.
So, any discussion, gentlemen? Chan or Greg, you good with it?
I'm good, and I move we approve.
Okay. Chan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion.
I did.
That unanimously, we accept Jessica White as a full member.
Thank you.
Oh, no, second Greg. Let's not fight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Jessica, thanks for your offer, and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I look forward to it.
We appreciate your volunteering.
Yeah, definitely.
Oh, this is marvelous. Number five, consider the appointment of Crystal Adams and Karen Fitzpatrick as full members of the Beautification Committee for the term July 16th, 2020 through November 16th, 2021. Gentlemen, I might mention to you, they were responsible with their sons who suppo, they told me the sons volunteered, I'm not so sure. But they spent about a day and a half shopping for plants, and they did the south side of the town hall, and also the volunteers mulching the rosebushes on the common. So anyway, after they've already done the work of the Beautification Committee, now they want to be appointed to be recognized. So, you have their applications? Does somebody want to make a motion?
I will. I move we approve both appointments.
Okay.
Despite the fact that they're very shady characters.
I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask Karen, is she there, right? What's your philosophy?
Careful what you say, because she's about eight feet to my right.
What's your philosophy, Karen? You didn't fill that one in.
Oh, is that the one I forgot to fill in? I think my philosophy...
Water the plants.
I didn't hear what you said.
Philosophy of plants?
Well, don't forget to water the plants.
Don't forget to water the plants.
Yes, I won't forget to water. I've even driven by with my son on my off-hours at the town hall to go water the plants, as well as Crystal and her son. And we take turns during our lunch break to make sure it stays maintained. And that would be my philosophy. Philosophy is to continue to try to maintain the beauty of our town.
Okay, we all set on the appointment, appointment, rather?
Right.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Next, consider the appointment of Charlene Cutler as Board of Finance Representative to the Open Space Land Acquisition and Preservation Committee. And it would be for a term today through November 16th, 2021. And Charlene is also... Chan, go ahead.
So moved.
So moved, okay. Greg?
I'm in favor.
All right. Charlene, look at that, no discussion, nothing. You're shooing.
Wow.
Thank you very much. Okay. Number seven, you will see, and I'm gonna give you a brief overview. The bottom line, and this is Chan and Greg, the bottom line is, we're gonna do a direct purchase bond. And we're gonna go from what was previously a public bond to a private bond. And what this means is, for about $2.5 million, we're gonna refinance the percentage over 10 years, okay? On a bond that we currently have, the percentage rate is gonna go from 4% down to 2%. So over a period of time, we're gonna save at least about $100,000. So in my estimation, and again, I'm gonna turn this over to Karen for the details. And we also have Steve Maseroni, who I believe is joining us. He can give further details on how this all works legally and financially. But just for myself, and I asked Karen this morning, for Greg and for Chan, it's basically, it's gonna save us money, and we're gonna go for a lower finance from 4% to 2%.
That's great.
So, I'm gonna ask Karen, in fact, we might even switch seats, so they can look at you. I'm gonna ask Karen if she would explain this further. And again, I believe that Steve may be online, and if you have any further specific detail questions, he could answer those. So, without further ado, Karen Fitzpatrick.
Well, thank you, Jay. Basically, what Jay said is true. This is a purchase, a direct purchase of a current bond that I believe was for a highway project back in 2010. It was a 20-year bond. It's been 10 years since we've had that bond, and we're up for a potential direct purchase at a lower interest rate. I've spoken with Steve Maseroni from Public Financial Advisors and with our bond counsel, Doug Gillette, who unfortunately can't be attending this meeting due to other obligations. Speaking with our financial advisor and our bond counsel, my questions to them were, you know, would this be in the best interest for the town? And after they had given us some information, basically, it does serve well for savings to the town. I believe the interest rate will be pretty much in half of what we'll be currently responsible for. We will no longer have a public bond. So that means, once we do this direct purchase, we will not have to file an annual continuing disclosure, which I usually have Steve help me with. And there's a small fee for that, that would eliminate that. We would not have to file with the state or anything at that point. Steve can correct me if I'm wrong. I think that, you know, this will definitely be some savings to us over the next 10 years. From what I gather from Steve and our conversations, it's about $100,000 to the town over 10 years. He wants to correct me. I might leave that up to him. He's a little bit more in tune to how these bonds work for the town. But again, we will no longer have any public bond. It will be a private purchase, and we won't have to comply with the continuing disclosures that the town usually has to do. Steve, you there?
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm not sure if there's anything I've missed that you might want to elaborate, or if the selectmen have any further questions on the savings that this is going to, you know, reflect for us moving forward.
Sure, I think you both did a great job explaining it. A couple points, we're at historic lows for interest rates. Tax exempt rates, despite what's going on with COVID, are very low. There's about $1,350,000 left on the bond. The estimated rate would be below 2%. That's what we're projecting. And as Karen pointed out, the savings are about $100,000. There is one test that we do. It's a present value test. And generally, what we like to see is at least 3% present value savings. And the GFOA recommends at least 3% present value savings. Currently, the estimated present value savings is 7.5%, so they're well above the recommended threshold for refinancing. And if approved this afternoon, we'd get going to solicit proposals from banks to purchase the bond on a direct purchase basis. The process takes about four weeks.
Steve, I'm sorry, I kind of missed some of the things. Did you happen to mention to the selectmen that this particular type of bonding does not need to go to a town meeting and a referendum? It's something that's voted on with the Board of Selectmen?
I did not mention that, but that's correct. Any refinancing of an existing bond is, does not have to go to the voters. It just can be done by the Board of Selectmen.
I just wanted to make sure that Chan and Greg were aware of that responsibility that we did not, and for the public record, too, that we don't need to go out to a referendum to approve this, because it is already an existing bond, which is kind of like refinancing.
That would make total sense, because it's an existing debt. All you're doing is trying to reduce the amount of payback, which is fantastic, and thank you for taking care of that.
Good step, in the right direction.
Okay, any other questions for Steve?
Just, we're gonna, we're gonna save a lot of money, $100,000 roughly, which is fantastic. But what's the associated cost to do this conversion?
Yeah, good question. So the fees are, we estimate about $43,000, but the savings are net of all the fees and expenses. So really, the true savings, you could say, it's $150,000 less the $40,000 or $43,000 in fees you're gonna pay. So again, you're gonna net out $100,000 or so, based on current market.
Okay, so that's a net, that's great. Karen, where would these funds come from?
We're gonna roll them over into the existing bond when we refinance. So it doesn't, there's really no out-of-cost expenses, upfront costs, I should say, because all the expenses for the legal fees, the financial fees, and that type of stuff get rolled over into the new bond.
Okay, very good.
Is that correct, Steve?
Yep, you're absolutely right.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions?
I do. I do.
Greg?
Can you hear me? Yep. Okay, on this, on this resolution, Schedule A, Paragraph A, the second line, it says... What the hell was that? Not to exceed $1,500.
Greg, hold on, please. I'm sorry, I can't hear anything you're saying.
Somebody else is talking.
Can I still...
We're experiencing network... We're experiencing network difficulties.
Greg, I'm really sorry, I, I couldn't hear one word you said.
I, I can hear you fine now.
Yep.
Okay, on, on Schedule A, that first page, Paragraph A, that the town issue refunding bonds not to exceed $1,500. The numerical indication is that it's 1,500,000.
Oh, yeah, good catch.
Or is it, or is it, or is it-
Not to exceed $1,500.
Yeah.
It should say 500,000, you are correct.
500,000, okay.
Um, I can reach out to our Bond Counsel.
Yeah.
Um, after this meeting, I can send him an email and ask him to, um, to correct that, but for the record, um, Steve, is it safe, safe to say that we could just vote on the figure that's in the parentheses?
Yeah, I, I am, I'm not an attorney, uh, of Bond Counsel, but I would just say that maybe the vote is that, um, you just, uh, read it, that it's, um, you know, it's a not to exceed 1.5 million, just make it clear that the vote is for not to exceed 1.5 million.
Okay, Chris, did you get that? So, did you get that, Jay? So basically, Steve said that he would make the vote to say not to exceed 1.5 million, and then I will have the Attorney's Office notify them of this error in-
With $1,000.
Yeah, but you're gonna make, you're gonna make a, um, a motion to vote on this not to exceed $1.5 million. Thank you, Steve.
Very good catch.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't even catch that, that's great.
Fresh eyes sometimes help. And then on B, third line in B, except to the extent reimbursed from grant monies. It's misspelled, M-O-N-I-E-S is the plural of money.
Um, hold on, I'm trying to find it.
Third line of C.
Third line.
Is it what?
Third line of C?
B.
Oh, B.
B.
Oh, yes, it should be from grant monies, it should be IES.
Yep. That's all-
Okay, I will, uh, this, the Attorney's Office drafts this and-
All right.
Sends it over, that was, and send over an updated copy, and then I will provide that to you and Chan.
So, so, uh, are we done?
Yes, you have to make them, um, you have, you have to approve it.
Yep.
Not to exceed 1.5 million dollars.
Um, I'll do that, if you want, if you want.
Yes, because if you read the resolution above it, it does specifically say the issuance of not exceeding 1, 1,500,000.
Right, right, yeah, okay. I, I, I move that we approve the, uh, this, this, um, procedure and resolution, um, not to exceed 1 million, 1.5 million dollars. And, and as, and as further amended with a spelling correction down below.
Did you get the spelling correction?
Yes.
Okay. All right, uh, Chan?
Yes.
Okay. I'll vote, uh, vote in favor, so unanimous.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
I can't mute this, because-
No, but, I don't know if they can hear us through the phones.
Were you okay?
Yeah, what we're trying to-
Hey, we're trying to-
We haven't stopped here. We're getting, we're getting- I dialed off.
So that we can listen to you.
All right.
And I can hear you now, thank you.
All right, yeah, you sound clearer, on my end, you sound clearer, too.
Thank you.
All right, you.
We're gonna, uh, persevere here. Um, okay, let's see, number eight, tax rebates, we have none. Correspondence and announcements, uh, we have none. Um, other from committee, Greg or Chan? Gentlemen, yes, Greg?
I have a couple things, I'll try to be quick here. Um, communication from constituents, um, seems to be lately, you may have noticed this too, Chan, there's, there's some significant heavy truck traffic in my area, uh, New Sweden Road and, and around. Um, some are traveling at a high speed, and perhaps enforcement by Troop D might be just, you know, a presence to be shown there. But I also have to heard that they, that they really, really complain about the, the lack of roadside mowing. And I did talk to John Navarro a while ago, and he said that they're doing it when they can, but this, this needs to be done now. Um, there's no place, often, there's no place to get out of the way of trucks coming down the road, and because there's nothing on the side but poison ivy and briars to jump into. They're not, that's not making happy campers. So I would like to be able to tell them that there'll be a, you know, some action. Maybe the first selectman will talk to Troop D and, um, get somebody to come up here more frequently and set up a, you know, I know where the trucks are coming from, and, and those are not necessarily the problem. They're, they're bigger trucks than, you know, and, and I don't know where they're coming or going, so. Anyway, that's one, that's one. And then the second question, is there any, any comment on that, before we go on to another one?
Yeah, I, I have a question. You're talking about roadside mowing and poison ivy. I, I don't understand, are you talking about walkers and runners?
Walkers, yeah.
Oh, okay, no, 'cause you're talking about roadside mowing and truck speeding and poison ivy, and I'm thinking, wait a minute, so, okay, you're talking about walkers. And I've already had that issue with, uh, uh, English neighborhood roads, some other roads, for folks walking dogs or jogging and that sort of thing. And I've already talked to John, in fact, he's got a dedicated person because of that, and perhaps you, Greg, talking to him that's doing specific mowing, uh, I believe for the next week and a half.
Well, that's terrific, I'd like to, like to see that, you know?
There has been progress made in certain areas in town.
I'm sorry, Chan, go ahead.
There's been progress with the mowing, uh, in several areas in town over the last, uh, week and a half or so, so I can vouch that he's been diligently trying to catch up.
Right. Greg, you had mentioned speeding trucks, can you tell me specifically where?
Um, on New Sweden Road.
Okay.
Just, just like, if I, if I'm out there walking, and I have been, and I, they come by, and I will stop and turn around, and they just roar right on by, you know, some of them. Some of them are, slow it down and say hi and all that, you know, that's great. But anyway, just, I just think that, you know, a, 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 a presence of, of, of a trooper, and if they wanna park in my driveway, I think I can work that out. And, and, you know, place for them to go, because they can't pull off the road, because it's all full of briars and, and poison ivy.
All right, um, Greg, when you talk about speeding trucks, are you talking about commercial box trucks?
Big trucks, big, big, big trucks. Truck, even tractor trailers, even tractor-
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Yep.
All right, tractor trailer, box trucks, not just pickup trucks.
Oh, no, no, it's not, it's not necessarily pickup trucks.
Okay, all right.
And, and I got, I got another issue to talk about too, but you've gone, done with this one.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to take notes, but, okay, go ahead.
So, you know, and, and actually, it would be interesting to get, to get a list of where they, where they mow, and what order they mow, and based on, you know, who's, who's living where, and stuff like that, you know? I mean, I, I don't know, just might be helpful to, might be helpful to the Highway Department to know where people, you know, really need to have that cut back, an, anyway.
I leave it up to the Highway Department to determine what needs to be mowed, how often and where. I mean, I, you know, you can't have people calling the Highway Department to say, hey, I'm special, I live on this road, please do my road, and somebody, you know what I mean? I, I, that's why the High, Highway Department has their own schedule of where they go and when.
Okay, all right, I, I-
I'm not, I'm not sure I'd open it to the public to, you know, say, please contact the Highway Department to let us know when you would like your road mowed.
No, you're right, and I'm not suggesting that at all, I just like to know what, you know?
John's gonna, I'm sure he's hitting the areas that need it worst, um, but this is his area of expertise, and I, I say we leave it up to John.
Okay, sure, great.
I, I agree, because a lot of it, Greg, is issues, it's, it's issues around safety, it's issues around sightlines, it's issues about fire prevention, uh, with the mowing and that sort of thing, so, you know, and I think, uh, areas that are populated more, curves, et cetera, et cetera, I think that's some of the things they look at. Okay, um, Greg, do you have anything else?
Yeah, two other issues, that they're kinda related. Um, about this movie that's being filmed at the inn, where are the, where are the actors and staff coming from? And did they, if they came from anywhere where there are states that are on the list that the governor put out, are, have they been quarantined? Where are they staying? Um, obviously, the-
Can I answer, you know, you, you're rambling, if you could ask a question and let me answer, I'd be very happy to do so, but you're going on and on and on. You wanna know where they're from?
I wanna know where, where they're from, and if they're, and if they're, and if they've been quarantined.
Greg, they're no different than any other person that comes to the town of Woodstock. Anybody's allowed to come, we don't have a policy of quarantining anybody who shows up from anywhere.
State does.
Town of Woodstock doesn't.
Greg, in answer to your question, I've been dealing with this production company from day one. There are local actors from New York and Connecticut. They self-quarantined for 14 days where they are staying. I'm not gonna mention where they're staying, but they quarantined, self-quarantined for 14 days. Now, what was your other questions about them?
I, Greg? You've kinda answered part, partly, uh, but I'm just concerned that, that if they've self-quarantined, then, then, then I guess we can assume that there's, there's, they're not spreading the disease anywhere, if they're going around town, and if-
They're-
Go ahead.
They're not interacting with the public. They're interacting among themselves, and any of the places they've been working, they have all been wearing masks and maintaining a six-foot distance, uh, whether it's their tech people, their electricians, special effects, that sort of thing. They've all been wearing masks and maintaining distance away, and it's not like you're interacting with folks within the town.
Okay, that, that, that's, that's good news, thank you. And the other thing is that, has there been any discussion, um, with migrant workers maybe coming to town, um, so, and, uh, has there been any discussion about similar type things with Northeast District Department of Health, or the agribusiness community, um, about where, where these people are coming from? Will they be quarantined? Are there any precautions, the stuff like that? Because they're coming, they may be coming from states that have high, high exposure rates, too.
Well, do you, you know, have you been in touch with any of the local companies that might hire them to find out where their folks are coming from, their summer help?
I have not. Are you, are you suggesting that I should?
No, I'd rather keep the relations good the way they are. I will check with the Health Department and just say that we have in the past have had migrant folks coming in, but again, I don't see that as an issue.
All workers that come to agriculture-
I'm sorry, Chan?
Any, any, um, agricultural help that's brought in for seasonal work, uh, like at an orchard or something, that's all done through the government, they've got a list of who they send, and I'm, I would be amazed if they don't have some kind of a program as far as quarantining before they let them come in to, to work.
And I don't really think it's up to us as a town to, uh, legislate or to enforce Health Department or state regulations. Like, for instance, uh, going up to, uh, Windsor Locks at the airport, and as people are flying in, asking, are you going to Woodstock? Because again, no, you know, you think I'm being facetious, but what-
I'm not saying that, Jay.
What you're proposing, uh, is really, it's more up to the state, it's up to the Health Department and that sort of thing, I, I don't think it's really up to the town.
Well, I guess, I guess where I'm coming from on this is, don't you think that, that, that it would behoove, that behoove everybody's, um, sense of security, I suppose, that a statement comes from the town hall once in a while about this movie, and then what these guys are doing, and this, th- these migrant workers, and, you know, what's taking place, and what to guarantee that the disease is not spread, you know? You know, to take precautions, that's all. And I think, I think that is our, our responsibility.
You think our responsibility-
Anything?
Come out with statements?
I, I can't-
To the general public?
What?
No, I, I said, you, you feel it's up to the Board of Selectmen or the town hall to come out with statements to residents of Woodstock regarding possible migrant workers and possible, um, uh, things that are being taken into account with a group that's filming a, uh, making a film in town? But you think the town hall should come up with statements to taxpayers regarding the Hallmark group and them making a movie, or folks coming in, uh, migrant workers?
Well, let's put it this way, when people know that, that there's, um, people coming from, he, come, they're just passing through, they're coming here and they're staying in, in this area for an extended period of time to film the movie, to pick the crops, and, and what, what assurances do we have that, that thi- things will be protected? The safety will be-
Well-
That, that's what I'm saying, and a- asking, I guess, and, 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 and what can we do to, to reassure people that, that things are, 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 are fine, and their, and their steps are being taken? So, yeah, I think that's something that we should be doing.
I think if the general population-
I disagree with that.
Entailed reasonable, um, use of masks and hand sanitizer and that sort of thing, and watch out for themselves in contracting COVID-19, I think they're a heck of a lot better off than worrying who might come into town from out of town. Universal precautions. No, do you understand where I'm coming from? I think if people use universal precautions themselves, they'll be a heck of a lot safer than worrying about who might or might not be coming into town from outside.
You, you can't, it's not policeable, it's not doable. Um, and you're, you're picking on a certain group of people, well, I got a delivery today from New York City, and it was two gentlemen that delivered the stuff. Well, there is no guarantee, you can't, I mean, I think Jay is correct, all you can do is use, use the safety guidelines that everybody's been given, and you can't guarantee anybody's safety anywhere.
Anything else from, uh, Board of Selectmen, please?
I'm all set.
I'm, no, I'm fine.
All right, thank you. Okay, folks, um, anything from public comments? Any of the newly appointed, uh, folks, Jessica or Charlene, about how thrilled you are to be, uh, part of this, uh, operation?
Well, actually, I'm glad to finally be part of the Open Space Acquisition Committee since the Board of Finance actually appointed me to do this for them back in February. So I wasn't aware that the process would be so elongated. But anyway, I'm glad we've got it all squared away.
I am too, and welcome. And welcome to Megan Bard Morse, one of my favorite chairs of one of my favorite committees in town.
I'm sure.
How are you?
I'm hanging in there, how are you?
I thought it was the same.
I'm sure. Um, just quickly about the Facebook pages to, as far as the town. I would just have you just double-check against the Freedom of Information Act because the Facebook page will be an arm of the town. It's not going to be just governed by a separate committee that doesn't have anything to do with the town. So I would double-check the Freedom of Information Act requirements. I would also encourage you to put together a policy. But because it is an agent of the town that will be operating the Facebook page, you just need to double-check what can and can't be done when it comes to, I guess, conversations and deletions.
Okay.
But that was all about it. Just, just double-check with them. And the Freedom of Information Commission is just, it's just a phone call. It's not a, it doesn't have to be a formal meeting with an attorney or anything like that. They give advice for free. And I'm positive they have done this before, so...
We've, we've had frequent contact with them over the last six months or so for a variety of reasons. And Megan, I didn't know if you had tuned in earlier, but we did say, I think Greg had brought it up, and I mentioned that there is a group working now on a policy.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, all right.
That's all, I mean, it's, I can certainly understand the concern as far as what people could post in conversations that could be held. But because it is an arm of the town, it, the page we held to different standards than say, Woodstock Proud or Woodstock Loud.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck, guys.
Anything else?
What?
I said, and good luck with everything.
Oh, thank you, I need it. Take care. Anything else from, from public?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
I hear, second.
Okay, unanimous, thank you all for joining us this, oh, I got a, okay, thank you all for joining us this afternoon.